Okay, well, let's start at 7:03 PM. Good evening. First, we'll take role for the board of selectmen. This is an all-boards meeting. It's a high-grade meeting. We have a couple of members of the boards on by Zoom. So Kevin Moynihan is present for selection. Kathy Corbin is present.
Here.
Nick Williams is present for the board of selectmen, so. Town council, Penny, will you take the role, please?
Yes, Penny Young here.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Tom Betterworth.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
He should be joining later.
Robin Bates-Mason is not going to be here this evening. Mark Genski.
Here.
Maria Naughton.
Here.
Rita Bettina.
Yeah.
Kaufman. Let's see him. Okay. Kimberly Norton.
Here.
I assume, and Hillary Ormon.
Here.
David Cora.
Thank you, Penny. Judy?
Board of finance, Neil Buttnick. Is he on Zoom? I can't... No. I thought he was gonna be. I thought he was, too. Maybe he's coming. Judy Noble. Tom Schulte. No. Amy Carroll. Here. Is he on? Tom?
Neil.
Neil? Oh, yeah, I thought he was. Yeah. All right. Todd Laviere.
Here.
Michael Chen. Chris Labree. Victor Alvarez. Maria Weingarten. Robert Hamel is on.
Here.
And Colin Dobbin is here. So do we... Are we voting? Do we need a...
No.
No? Okay. All right. And our first selection has already introduced himself. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the second all-boards meeting on the important question of deciding how to modernize our police facilities. First of all, I'd like to welcome our new town council members. We have four new members, three of whom are here or on Zoom. And for their benefit as well as for the public, I'll just remind people that we started this process seven months ago to study the process, to study whether we should renovate our current police department building or build a new police department building at that site or elsewhere. We hired two leading police architecture firms in the Northeast, Jakinsky Ums Associates and Castle Booze. Both architects are here tonight to, on the one hand, with the building committee. I shouldn't mention, but we also have several members of the police department building committee with us, including Bill Walbert, co-chairman, and Jim Bell, who will present. We have several members of our police commission and also our PD are here tonight, so. And the... So Bill Walbert and Jim and Brian Hughes will present tonight on the further on the possibility of renovating as new the current building or demolishing the current building and building a new facility at 174 South Avenue. And then Chuck Booze and Eric Royce will... Royce will present on behalf of KBA on the sites that have been studied for an alternative location. I remind people that the current building is 93 years old, a former high school. It was repurposed in 1981 to be the police department. Tonight, again, we're gonna listen, ask questions, but we're not making any decisions yet. We have some important issues to resolve before we make some decisions in December and January. And again, the guiding principle is what is the best solution for our police force? So with that, Bill and Jim and Brian, welcome again.
Hello, I'm Bill Walbert. Thank you, guys, for having us here. I want to thank the selectmen for appointing the building committee. Thank you very much. And first thing I'd also like to do is thank the members of the building committee, the regular members, Paul Foley, Paul Toley, both back there, myself, Jim Bell here, Michael Chen, Amy Murphy Carroll, Patty Rashad, and Mike Morrow. They really have devoted a lot of time over the last seven months looking at the alternatives for the current police site. Ex-official members, Stuart Salabini was a real supporter of our building committee and did a lot of work, not just over the past few months.
Stuart's here.
Buddy. But also for years, you know, pulling the facts together to get us to a position to really have consensus that something needs to be done with the current police building. Also, Andrew Walsh, John DiFederico, and of course, Leon. Thank you, guys. They've also been amazing help to our building committee. And of course, the architect who we hired, Brian Hughes. Thank you so much. Brian is here to answer questions that the building committee can't pull off the top of our heads. The... We did take a vote last week. The building committee, not unanimously, chose to support a resolution that supported a refurbishment as new of the current police building. Jim will go more details of what refurbishes new truly means. Brian also talked about that last, at the last group meeting. Two members of the committee feel that it's better to just tear the thing down and start over from the current site. And that I want to make sure I represent that as well. Our views were not unanimous. And that, you know, good people, good, smart people with the town's best interests at heart could differ on which direction to take going forward. So I wanted to say that. And with that, I'm going to introduce Jim Bell to go through some of the findings of the building committee.
All right, seems like I can make this share.
Bill, could I clarify what you voted on? You voted on the fact that the current location, that the current building can be renovated as new as a viable option, not as compared to alternatives?
Absolutely. Our charge was strictly looking at the current address of the police station. We were not charged with looking at alternative sites.
Thank you. All right. Technology has now been resolved.
Speaking of life better.
Minimize that. Can you minimize the...
Yeah.
All right. You heard a good presentation last meeting from Brian on what he's done in the building. This is sort of a summary of what he's done and what the committee has done over the last several months. Bill's just covered the team. Basically, it's the assessment of everyone that the PD needs and requires an updated facility. It was the police section that had to do with the important things like prisoner detention and so on. They're 40 years old, and they need to be updated. The current status on jails is totally different. There are certain criteria on evidence stores and things like that that just can't be maintained under the current circumstances. So basically, what follows is what's in two pieces. One is what the site offers and two, what the renovators new offers and discussion also of the build new. And two variations on a renovate as new. So the current site has been a public safety site since 1981, when the school, which was built in 1928, was converted to the police department. In 76, when the ambulance corps came along, the former auto shop of the high school became the ambulance corps building. Was gutted and converted rather clearly into a headquarters for the ambulance corps. In 2007, and I see duty here was part of it. If there was a plan underway to break this building, it was sitting in right now. So we... I was given the task by duty to lead the team that would renovate the building then to make it suitable for a town hall. Interesting little turn of things that happened here. When the town hall project didn't start exactly as planned, and we got the renovation done there prior to needing it for the town hall. So we took advantage of the opportunity, and we moved the ambulance corps up to the top floor of the police department for a year while the ambulance corps building was constructed. And it worked beautifully. The police building, I can tell you this, having been charged with that building committee, too, is built like you can't probably build a building today. They didn't have computers, so they put extra safety factors in the margin when they built things in 1928. The building is steel and brick of length, the size you wouldn't exactly find in a new building. At the time, the upper floor was completely gutted, so we've seen the inside, what's beneath the floors, the steel girders and everything inside. At that time, we basically renovated as new to the upper floor. New walls, the new electric. We did not replace the windows at that time, which is only we will recommend later on in this project. But it is constructed in such a way that the building is 100 and some feet long, and there are no interior structural walls, except the two walls in the center hall and the outsides of the building. And the big steel span, strong steel supporting between those, and that means that it can be configured in almost any way. And the same is also true for the main level, which is where most of the police activities are now. It's the same construction. It's two center walls and two outside walls, spanned with strong amounts of steel. The building will be there as long as we choose to leave it there. It's not gonna fall down. I'll come to a couple of things about that in a minute. So it's been a public safety site, first starting in 81 or so, and then in 76, when the ambulance corps moved down there, and then more strongly when ambulance corps building was built in about 2007, 8. And it still is serving and that functioned very well. As you all know, the neighbors are accustomed to it. When we went through this, we had to notify every neighbor all around, and we got all the input and complaints and everything else. And it's been, it's one of those things where everyone there now with, I mean, I like everything that goes on there, but it's part of the life. It's part of the life in that particular environment. Good location to all the corners of town. The police and EMS both respond to medical emergencies. Often, the police are on the roads, so they go there directly, and they're all trained as first responders. So it works in conjunction, but often they both leave at the same time. And when EMS leaves, it's often, it can be a police car or not, it's an ambulance and a fly car, which is where the paramedic goes in the fly car, so we have the ability to be flexible. Anyway, over the time, the police and EMS have a very cooperative relationship. One of the members of this committee actually had a case where they had an emergency, came to the door of the police department. Our people were out on a call, and they went next door to the police department. Police paged, got EMS coming and gave first aid. So there's a case of real synergy on site, and that's happened at other times. I've actually had that happen myself. So anyway, it is, it is, it's a public safety site. There are other synergies between the two, many of which could be separated. But one that's very important is that the parking in that area has some constraints. When we built the EMS building, we added about 30 spaces on the lower level. Maybe more. Some of it's now used for police evidence storage and other storage. But between the two, between the upper store, the upper parking, the lower parking, the front parking, it fits on the site, and everybody uses it. EMS has commission meetings, training sessions. If you've seen, down South Avenue recently, you've seen a sign out, we're gonna run a new EMS class. And so people are gonna be coming there to attend those classes. The heat for the EMS building comes from the boiler in the police building. That could be separated. The emergency radios, excuse me, not the emergency, but the regular radios are in a radio room in the attic of the police department, as well as antennas on top. That, too, could be separated. The emergency power for both buildings comes from one generator, which is located just as you drive into the police department.
Jim, do you want to move the slide up? I think that's the first slide on the... You're reading the second slide. You're just doing the power.
Do I see... I'm looking at about the third line from the bottom on this one.
Yeah.
It's not showing. It's showing here.
You're talking about radio, emergency power.
Next slide, next slide.
I think it was the next slide that you were covering.
Not showing. That's what's showing here on my screen.
Oh, okay, it's not showing. This is still the first slide.
The...
For those of us who read.
And one of the key things is the ambulance ingress and egress is shared by the police department and EMS. The ambulances come in by the schoolhouse apartment, loop around the back, and come in and arrive back into the EMS building. And then both the police and the EMS leave by the shared driveway between the two buildings. This one up here is different.
It doesn't say shared size of your eyes, huh?
Just advance to the next slide.
There we go. Okay. So I guess this is, this is one behind what you guys are seeing. Sorry about that. Okay. Now we know what we're seeing here. So basically, that's what you guys are seeing. PowerPoint has this presenter mode, and obviously, this one isn't in that mode where the presenter can see one slide ahead. And that's what's happened here. So we can fix that problem quickly. Okay, so we're seeing this current site, 174 South Avenue. I'm sorry about that. So this is the, what I pretty much just talked about with the shared ingress and egress for the ambulances and the police cars. All right. Moving on to the current building, I talked a little bit about this. It was, it was built in 1928. So it's getting up towards the 90s years of age. It's been opened up twice. It was opened up, completed, renovated. It's a police department, and the jails were put in, and the salary port was installed, and the you see now, not everything, but most everything you see now was done then. At that time, also, an elevator shaft was put in. In 2007, we actually installed the elevator, and it served ADA purposes, but it also let people come into the building, and there's access control in the elevator, so people could go up to town hall on the upper floor, but still enter in the main lobby. So the elevator can be controlled for lower level, middle level, and upper level. So in most regards, that we can figure out, this building clearly fits a profile for renovate as new. And in a minute, I'll talk about what renovate as new means. The space requirements are similar also to what we need with one small addition, where there's a little corner where we proposed to fill in and make a physical training room. It would be a one-story, on-the-ground level adjacent to the back of the building. We did a simpler thing. We added a three-car garage to the back of the building for both maintenance and evidence storage on the north side of the building. This would be a PT room of similar size on the south side of the building. Okay, the current building is strong enough, as I said, and with the addition of hurricane-resistant windows, which would both, the windows that are in there now were changed in 1980, and they do not go with the architecture of the building. If you've seen pictures of the original building, they're different windows, and we can now match new hurricane-resistant windows with the current building, fifth building. And when all said and done, this structure would qualify as an essential facility. I know when you build the EMS building, one thing, you have a hard time. When you build a public safety facility now, it has to be much stronger than any other public building. Brian may be able to speak to that, but it has to be hurricane, cyclone-proof, and just about everything else. So okay, so what does renovate as new means? Talking about it right now, it means new external trim, a new composite couplin instead of the wooden one that's there now. As you may or may not remember, this body paid to have the roof replaced in the last five to eight years. I forgot exactly which year it was, but the roof is fairly new. At the time, we did the renovation in 2007, a second boiler was added, so we had backup. It's kind of 50/50 deal. One brother goes out, we don't lose all the heat. And so they're not at their design life, but as with any mechanic equipment, it will have to be replaced multiple times during the life of the building. The renovator's new does provide new heating and air conditioning equipment, except in the case of a perfectly functioning boiler. We propose to leave that in place as opposed to those replacing it. An opportunity also to do something for the environment, put in good, energy-efficient lighting. And we would expect that the work would result in a building with the life expectancy of a new building. Help me make sure the slides are synchronized here.
Which is probably one of the most important elements of renovate as new. You know, we believe, and architects believe, that renovating as new will give us a building that will last just as long as a Brady Hill.
Some of you were involved in this, but Penny Rashan and I were chair of the committee with Bill on the committee and Amy on the committee also, when we redid Saks a few years ago. That was a renovate as new project. That is a technical term, renovate as new, and it qualified, therefore qualified for state funding, and we got about a 20% rebate on that project by doing, meeting the criteria for renovate as new. All right. You've met Brian, and some of you just met him because he's recently been elected, and congratulations. I worked with Brian first on the renovating the police department to be the town hall, and then he was selected as the architect for the new EMS building, and we worked together then. And then he's worked with the police department more recently on the need study in 2018. And he's been working with this committee on this renovate as new project. He certainly has got as much information about this building as you could probably expect from someone that you get in from the outside. The, we talked about some of these things. The elevator was installed, the additional boiler, and the need study. That need study has been the basis for the work which you're seeing now. Okay, we also looked at the request of these bodies and others to see what it would take to build a new building on the current site. And the main issue with building a new building on the current site is that there is no other location on the site to build a new building, in reality, except the current site, except the current building footprint. Therefore, in order to do a new building on the site, you have to tear the current building down. And first, you have to move everybody out into some new temporary facility, and then you have to demolish this building and build a new building there. The combination of those things makes this very expensive by having to vacate and tear down and then build on the same site. Brian, at the request of committee, hired a professional cost estimator, and without going into detail, that proposal was in the range of $10 to $15 million more than renovating the current building. I'm gonna show you in a minute, two different approaches for renovating the building. One is occupied, and the other is vacant. So the next thing I want to talk about, I said, if you can move it ahead for me. See if I can go back here. Renovate as new, tell me what that chart shows. Okay. This is a touchstone, the new, same, new building on the same site. And then I want to digress for a minute and talk about indoor firearm training. The police need a place to train. There are legal requirements. They have to do a certain amount of training. And in order to do that, they either, they currently go to an outdoor range in and I guess it's in either South Ridgefield or North Wilton. I'm not sure exactly where the borderline there is, but it's up in that area. Or the, and or they have to borrow time at another facility in the area. There is a requirement for training, and that's well acknowledged. There's a proposal which Brian developed, which is quite innovative, that actually puts a standalone training range on the current site, located between the upper and lower parking lots, and about 50% below grade. So it can be totally isolated acoustically and physically from anything else, and can be constructed as a standalone site. It would be a, it would be a very nice training facility, five-lane, which would be more than adequate for qualifying people to meet their firearms training. A larger, wider range can be used to, you know, in some places, you can actually even bring cars into it and train, teach people how to get a suspect out of a car or something. But the standard would be a five-lane training facility for firearms training, and some downrange one-on-one or multiple people training. Because, as I mentioned, because it can be put 50% below the grade, it wouldn't be very intrusive, and it can be isolated from an acoustic and a safety point of view. And the consensus of the committee, that would be an excellent training facility. That was what the town chose to do. We've separated that a bit because of the negotiations going on about other options for training with other towns. So I'm gonna show you that as a separate cost item. Okay, where are we? As we've talked about, the structure sound, we did some extensive masonry tests. I should say, Brian had people do extensive masonry tests. And there is some porosity in the masonry, which can be fixed with the proper treatment by sealant. Several people have noted that there was a water issue in the front. You might be surprised to know that when the building was converted in 1980, the whole lower level on the front, that's now dirt, was windows. The front of the building was three levels, three stories of windows. It's now two stories of windows on the front. What they did is they picked up the windows, piled dirt against it, and surprise, it leaks a little bit, just a little bit. Very easy to fix. Pull the dirt back, fix the brickwork, put a sealant on it, put a moisture barrier up, put proper drainage, and there would be no water seeping into the lower level of the and it's just, it shows on the wall. It doesn't show as a flood, but it seeps through the, when you pile brick, dirt, water, that's what happens. And 40 years. So it's amazing. It's actually, as it is right now, it's totally redeemable, renewable. The boilers, as you know, have all recently been converted to natural gas. The generator does run on diesel. It has its own diesel tank underneath the generator. It supplies diesel for the generator between the two buildings. So even in the event of, you know, we have gas for heat you may also recall, you've, it's sometime recently approved to be a complete rebuild of the dispatch center in the middle of the first floor. The elevator is ADA compliant, and the schematic design is pretty well done. There's still need for review, because when you move from schematic into construction documents, you want to make sure you've got the right eyes, eyes crossed. Basically, with a go signal, Brian could be ready to start constructing documents. And as you'll see, a bit that and a bid process, we'd get shovels in the ground in mid-2022.
All right, here's the... You probably said that again. As far as moving forward, renovate as new would actually be the fastest, most likely.
There's other plans. This is not a comment on whether the plans are better or worse, but the one that could be ready to go, and the dollars are real, because any other cost that takes another year or two or three to get ready to go, you're gonna have inflated construction costs and material costs.
You said eight months from go.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, eight months from go, we're projecting, we have shovels in the ground. I'll come back to that in a moment. Unfortunately, this slide did not line up quite the way I supposed to, but I think you can still read it. We started with a hard cost of building, added soft cost, and then overall, between the soft cost and the total contingency, we've ranged it from 30 to 45%. So starting based off the building hard costs, adding about 20% for soft costs. It comes up to, uh,
We're expecting things to go wrong, why wouldn't you?
It's a hundred years old.
You know, we, uh, you know, our committee certainly talked a lot about, um, you know contingencies and we just felt that the last thing we wanted to do is, you know, lowball you guys with, with something, we wanted to put a lot of things in there, I mean, it's, it's a new bill, I mean, it's, it's an old building. The good news is it's been poked in product for 40 years, so we think we have a pretty good understanding of what is in there. And we do have, uh, people under contract that, uh, that have done a lot of the poking the product. Uh, the bad news is it's a, it's an almost 100 year old building, so you may, you may find some things, but we feel pretty good that we won't, but we wanted to put contingencies in there anyway.
Yeah, we would Norman on a project, yes, for 10 to 15% contingency and I, I think just for planning purposes, we'd just take the contingency as high as you want to take it. I think that's a smart thing to do. Now, there is a cost difference between vacant and doing a vacant occupied and sorry that vacant, I got slipped over in the slide. But as you can see, it's about a delta of, uh, you know, two, one, 11, six to 13, uh, one.
Million and a half.
Million and a half delta approximately to, uh, move everybody out, renovate, you probably save a month or two, you don't save a lot of time, save maybe two months out of a total 18 months construction project.
If things go well.
Yeah. So that's, so the range, uh, for occupied would be 11, six to 13, one and vacant 13, one to 14, five approximately.
And Jim, the difference vacancy, what are the costs involved with respect to the vacancy? Obviously you gotta get, get alternative sites, yeah.
Well,
How does it break down those costs?
Let me start with the occupied. Uh, the, the scheme that Brian worked out would basically move the detective bureau, which now occupies the upper floor, to someplace like Irwin, Irwin Dolly. There are about five people that work there, they don't contact the public particularly and they could possibly be moved up there and there's plenty of space. Then the, the, the plan would be to renovate the top floor. It'd be vacant renovated and that's where the chief's office and most of the business offices would move to. And then, uh, at the same time, and the, and the first stage is build the new physical training facility. And then systematically in two more steps, move some people, renovate, move, renovate, and it's a three, it's a three step operation. So that's the, if, if, if you vacate, then we have to find, and by, and during all that time, the dispatch center would stay in operation.
Oh, onsite, okay.
In any case, at some point you have to find a different, uh, detention facility. Cause that's going to get gutted and rehabilitated. Standards on detention have changed considerably from bars and so on, now everything has to be, it's, it's, uh, you know, shatterproof glass and there's, you know,
For everyone's safety.
Yeah.
Especially our police force as well.
And more isolation between cells and it's, it's totally, if you saw a new jail and an old jail, you wouldn't really recognize them, they're, they're completely different. So if we do it vacant, then we have to find a place to, uh, move, uh, basically everything, uh, records, uh, evidence, people and so on, and we didn't cite where that could be. We'd have to find some locations, uh, I was recently in the situation where they literally put in trailers, joint trailers side by side and made a temporary police department. But those are, they've, they ran on those expenses, so a million and a half is a reasonable amount of money to set aside for that. But it can be done and there are some advantages to doing it, but we have
And the, and the committee did not vote on, one where the other, we did, we did not, um, or whatever.
The by, uh,
Cause a lot of the reasons really are somewhat soft, uh, we could, you could speculate about moving, you know, the things that can be saved by moving people out, so you're spending a little over a million bucks to move them out. On the other hand, uh, with supply issues, what they are right now, not knowing when, when a lot of materials are going to be coming in. You know, there are people that believe that allows the most flexibility in renovating the, the building and delivers the project in a more like, more likely on time manner than keeping, uh, keeping employees in the, uh, in the building, which, um, cause now if we're going to say we're going to be working on the bathroom on the second floor or the east wing, you know, but the, the fixtures didn't come in and now we're, we're kind of, we're kind of, um, we're kind of hurting because we have, you know, real employees trying to do their job, so, uh, that's, that's really what, uh, it's always at its source, if you will.
Brian has experience doing this and we, when we renovated 2007, we did it occupied. So we know it can be, we know it can be done. Now, uh, the range is, uh, is independent, that it can be, uh, built in parallel or two months later, two months earlier, the range is, uh, basically is about 40 or so feet from the, maybe seven, 60, 70 feet from the current building. And that can be done in parallel. I don't know if it came to anybody's attention, but one of the parts of this plan is also to add a covered parking area behind the building where the police cars now park and then top of the solar panels.
Carport.
Carport, basically a carport with solar panels, uh, so you get, uh, get a two for out of it. Police need someplace, it'd be nice to have covered vehicles during the winter and then also we get some, uh, ecology out of it by a little electric. Okay, uh, I told you the other one, uh, of the building new onsite is handicapped by having to take down the old building to get a decent site. And that, uh, that makes the cost quite a bit more. Brian had in his, and we can provide details whenever he wants, but he had a professional estimator came up with these numbers, including demolition, the time and, uh, everything else and it comes in the, with the same level of contingency, by the way. Uh, in 26 to 29, and we, you could always say, well, you don't need that much contingency, maybe it's only 22. It's, it's a, it's, it's just a lot more than renovators knew.
Yeah, another thing that drives that number is it's inherent that you're going to have to do the relocation in that scenario also. Cause that will require relocation where the whether renovate is new option, you have the option of whether you want to stay partially vacated or completely relocate. With the new building option, it's obviously demolish the existing building, so the first thing you have to do is relocate the entire department. And, uh, extends the construction period, it also extends the, the relocation period. So all of that is included in that, that price.
The, you know, if you liked the renovated as new proposal, uh, we would, uh, start with a review, get ready with the construction documents, uh, you know, out to bid in six months. Construction, you know, bid time acceptance, approval by the, the town boards, finance, selectmen, uh, town council two months and, uh, and have shovels in the ground in the August timeframe, she's, the goal was in January. My experience, the experience of others on the committee is we would recommend, uh, hiring a construction manager with a, and, uh, and an owner's rep also to aid the, the committee, uh, we did this, we did Saks, it worked extremely well.
Is that in the cost of the bu- budget?
It's in the budget, yes. So that's, uh, basically what the committee's been, uh, been up to and is, 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 don't point out, it's not, everybody thinks that this is the perfect solution, but it is, it is one solution. And it's one that's available. So, uh, happy to answer any questions, Brian's here.
He works.
I've got one, Jim, have you, have you thought about, I think the, the renovating place makes a lot of sense, but I, I, I'm trying to picture, should you keep the guys there working? You've got schoolhouse on the left and EMS on the right, so that's, you're sandwiched in there and I'm picturing a construction site which would include the PD working out of that and I, I'm having a tough time with amount of stuff going on over there that you'd be able to do that, but I'm sure logistically you could probably figure it out, but it seemed like it'd be a lot less hassle to get them out of there and
Committee is a little agnostic on this. If the preference of the town board is to town bodies is to vacate, we vacate.
Right, we didn't want to be so glad to say, yeah, an extra million dollars, uh, you know, that kind of thing, we just didn't want to, we didn't want to do that with, with taxpayer money. But having said that, um, it makes, it does make it all a lot of such, you're going to minimize some of your maximum regrets between, uh, you know, safety issues, the tight space, supply issues, there are a lot of things that could, uh, were, there were things that could go wrong by keeping employees in the
I think there's a third group here. Yeah, well, not to this extent of a renovation though. Yeah, look, I mean, not to decide tonight, right? I mean, that's part of the equation, but my guess is that, that the commissioner, the chief and the police have a lot to say about this as well. So I think I have to take that into consideration.
A personal note, uh, back on the site, uh, as I mentioned, I was involved with both this, this police renovation. And that committee had committed to the EMS building. I've, uh, worked as an, as an EMT, I've taken EMS classes there, uh, as a public safety site, this works extremely well. As if it becomes a mixed anything else, it's going to put the EMS people at a considerable disadvantage. You may or may not know that the EMS job is the one job in town that requires more time, I think, than any other volunteer job. There, people are volunteers, the minimum is 60 hours a month. We're not talking two hours a week, we're talking one 12 hour shift every day of the weekend, I, I, Todd knows because his son did this. And one 12 hour shift every weekend and maybe, and then addition emergency call outs. So, you know, this is not just a PD site, this is a public safety site and EMS plays a very key role.
Right, a lot of work was done to make sure the EMS facility would be supported and that a renovator's new solution would, uh, make their lives, if anything, a little bit easier. Similarly, uh, in putting a police, uh, training center slash firing range at the, uh, separately at the back of the, uh, building. You know, we look very hard at the, the type of landscaping that could be done, the fact that it's sitting under, under grade, uh, you know, hiding the, uh, the air handling units. You know, the, uh, we believe no, you, no one would hear the guns firing, there's no, uh, very comfortable looking everyone in the eye with that. However, air handlers to, uh, to continue to keep a safe environment, uh, like any air conditioning unit, whether we put them in a soft school or wherever, uh, they can be hurt and so we would, uh, make sure that we have a very good, uh, buffering for the air handling units, uh, and do a very good job with the, uh, with the landscaping as well to make sure that that would not be the case.
You build, would the EMS have to move out?
No.
They, under any scenario, they can stay.
They keep, yes.
Okay, that's important.
You may have mentioned this, uh, the previous time, but the, the plan would be if you did renovate in place, you would want the EMS building to have its own heat.
We're, we're already in the process of doing that.
You, that can, that can be done and that's not the big deal.
Yeah.
The heat part, the bigger problem actually are the generators, the sewer that runs underneath it and some other issues, other issues.
So that would be part of the overall plan as well to either maintain it as is or just keep them separate?
It could be done in several different ways, but the EMS could continue to operate. Especially if they change the heat, that would make it even a little easier.
Thank you.
And a renovator's do would require no compromises on the most important safety elements of this building, right? The cells, the Sally port, um, these are things, you know, their best practices that we want to make sure that everyone, uh, whichever side you're on, good guy, bad guy, that you're going to be safe, uh, coming in and, and be a process at the, at the police center. Uh, we want the interface that the community has, uh, there's no reason to believe that it will be far superior in a renovator's do to what is currently being provided. And, uh, so we can do that and, uh, to provide a safe environment for the people who are, uh, victims of crime, that they have a, uh, a, a private place to, uh, to, uh, to talk about, uh, what happened and, and so there, there are a lot of things that really a, a, a new, a new designed police station we'd all, that we'd all want for our, for our community and for our police and we could do a hundred percent of those things in a renovator's new design.
I have a question, besides the shooting range, would you expect that you would need an addition to the existing building? Would you expand the footprint?
Addition, I think it's about, uh, 20 by, it's a thousand, about 20 by 50 and it fits right in the corner on the, on the southeast corner of the building.
Multi-story?
One story.
One story.
Go Navy.
I, I mentioned, mentioned earlier, excuse me, Tom, that, um, the the meeting that Brian presented, the plan is something the new members of the town council should look at. Um, anyone who didn't previously, uh, watch that meeting ought to understand the whole plan and the easiest way is watch the video of that meeting. I think it was the September meeting or of the building committee.
It was your joint meeting.
I think Tucker, didn't you send it out today to the new members? Yeah, but I think even the old members or members who haven't watched that. Even the continuing members, if you haven't seen that meeting, you should, you should watch that meeting. We, we didn't want to go into the details tonight with Brian, but that you can watch that video and get the whole plan.
Jim, are, excuse me, are you going to give us a price estimate on the shooting range?
I did.
He did. What was that?
Three million.
Oh.
Oh geez, that went up.
Three one to three four?
Three, three to three point four roughly. And that's again with the same level of contingency, the hard cost, the hard cost on the range was 2.3 million. And then we added contingent to that.
Do you have any idea of what it cost us to send the police out of the zone to train?
Yes, uh, but I defer that to, uh, Leon, the answer is they've, they've analyzed that and uh, it's, Leon, you have any comment on that?
Roughly it's about a hundred thousand a year.
Okay, thank you.
And if, uh, I, I think one of the, uh, the, um, points that was made as the police were going through their need for this training facility is that they need to lock something down that they know they'll be able to use and it's right now, they're kind of hobbling a lot of stuff together. And so I think, you know, that, that is why there's their real, um, goal to get something permanent in place somewhere in town, you know, whether it's this site or, you know, it, it's, it doesn't need a, a huge amount of space to build it, but in just in terms of, for them to be able to have something that they can definitely count on to do their training and not be kind of seeing if they're going to close a range somewhere else or trying to hobble together.
A minimum time based on states, uh, state standards is not really our goal either. We want to, uh, obviously we want the best trade police force, uh, uh, in the state of Connecticut and that would require more, more time.
So, uh, the thinking I thought was, and this is up to you all, if, uh, there's a, the proposal with another town, there could be another site in town and there's this site, it can be done, the question, but it, uh, building itself can proceed while that other thing is in, in flux, so the thinking is in flux.
But you guys haven't looked at those other options necessarily?
That was outside our charter.
You have a question?
Does the new build, um, on the current site figure include the shooting range or a training facility or is that an additional cost?
A new building included the fireman.
It did, so the 26.33 to 29 is inclusive of that.
That is correct.
If you build a new building, you might actually include it as part of the building.
Right.
Oh, but the renovate does not.
Renovate does not, it's a separate facility.
You didn't present the total number, you presented X, the, uh, so the total number with the range is
It's, it's add, add three to either one of these numbers. So 14.
14 to 16. 17 to 18. Was the number.
15 to 16 or 17.
Yeah.
With vacate to 18, yes.
So are you guys saying you could, you could actually build, go into construction mode in eight months and still know that you could add this on?
Yes, because it's
In real time.
Facility, yes.
So it, so it doesn't tie into this building whatsoever, there's no architectural elements that need to be considered, there's no
Utilities that we could plan to go to the rear of the site, but we could do that as part of the building renovation and have those utilities ready to, to go if we needed them.
But it's a completely standalone.
A standalone facility.
And is there excavation to be done back there where you'd have to?
There will.
A small amount, uh, right now, uh, there's about a, I'm guessing it's about a 12 foot grade difference between the lower and it's slow, so it cut the slope.
So it's a builder right into the slope. Does that contemplate a bathroom in the facility or not?
No, no. No, the, the restroom facilities would be in the renovated building. So the range, if it was onsite, would be a, uh, a ready room area, a control room and then a five lane range.
But it would connect to the building, the main building?
No, separate to the rear.
So, so you would have to leave the main building to go to the other, you can't connect the two?
That is correct. And are you Politically, we're going to isolate the two structures.
So it needs its own heating system?
It has its own air handling system, correct.
Yes, well, the air handling system is quite complex for a shooting range because of the
Are you moving the special needs building that's on site?
No.
Even during construction?
Correct, no. We actually put up a fence to separate it. And I I worked closely with them before, and it would be the same this time. They can fully operate and wouldn't interfere with the operations. We built an isolate a fence to isolate for lights. And they kind of provided us with emergency power for the ambulances while we were constructing.
But it's a good question. I mean, let's face it, we want to be the best neighbors possible, obviously.
But can we move that building? Would it be an advantage on the site?
No.
To relocate it?
They have a lease, well, if we found another location.
Yeah.
But they have a lease that extends another sixty years or something so.
No, I understand.
That piece of property is not a good place to use for anything else, that part of that property.
Okay.
So for the reasons that Kevin just said, plus the fact that there's no need to move it. We can, they can continue to operate with, it should have no issues while we're while we are constructing.
One of the things about the firearms training range that you're talking about is that it seems that there are at least three that have been deactivated in Connecticut that are no longer, that are currently not being used, but were built at some time in the past. So I think there's a danger of that happening. I think most other police stations in Connecticut do not have their own firearms training range, if I understood correctly from the last meeting. The incremental cost that we're talking about is some is three million minus a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. And the police department very infrequently discharges their weapon in the line of duty. And then the last thing is that the police department has not had, since they haven't had a training range for a long time, they've been accustomed to going to other locations for this training. So my question is, it seems to me that this is a nice to have and not a must have like, you know, new jails, improving the evidence storage, HVAC plumbing, those are all necessary things for a police department. Firearms ring seems like a nice to have, is there some value that I'm missing?
Well, there are requirements, and I, the police could speak to this, Leon could speak to this very much more eloquently than I can. But there are state requirements about the amount of training officers must have. And and our goal is to be better than the minimum, to be good, just in case it does come up. That we've exceeded the state minimum requirements. Leon, would you like to make any comment about training?
I would. It's it's not a nice to have, it's a central piece of our training curriculum. Given the litigious times that we're in, you can see twenty six, twenty dollars burn itself a bit less through the training. There's three things that make great police department. That is policies, training, and oversight. We're missing the training aspect on this. We've been fairly going along through the past fifteen years because we've been struggling trying to meet our training needs. This is so essential, especially considering today's environment related to police. We want the best trained police officers in Connecticut. We want the best trained police officers in the nation. Thank God our officers do not use or what, that's because their training is really low. This is, this is an investment, and you can't look at it in dollars and cents, you really can't. There's intangible benefits to this that are essential. So protect us from liability, make our officer safe, they'll make our residents safer. This is really an essential part of our building. That that you can't just say it's 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 a need, it's it's a want, it's a want, it's an absolute need, that's what we need.
In support of.
We've got eleven officers who are under the age of thirty, right? Never handled that before, the most, right? So twenty five percent of our patrol are up there at night, stopping guard and need to have training in the environment that should be placed into, all right? This is not a nice to have, this is risk management. This is what this town must have its officers going through. We must have more training. And in an environment, as we said, what they're uses, what they're saying, we need low light, low light training, we need high light training, we need the noise training, we need crowd training. This is not a range, all right? Is that what you've ever heard about a range? This is not that. We can have live fire in it, but we can also do other simulations, which is extremely important. If you play golf, you go to the ranch, right? You go to golf. So if you play, you hit a lot of balls, you play bridge, you practice a lot of bridge. Younger officers and our older officers are given lethal weapons on their ways, all right? If we don't train, just don't want to have an accident happen. So this is improving our risk as a town, right? There's this concept out here, it's been true in the courts, of deliberate indifference. And you as a body, if you deliberately have an indifference of how they're training our officers, this town will be liable for a lawsuit that could happen.
This word of joy, but they do get trained, don't they? It's right now, they are getting trained.
Very, very little training is being done, in my mind, to what should be done and what other police stations, what other police forces do. And all news stations like in Stanford and Darien and Bethel all have ranges and all have trains.
It's not about putting the bullet in the little circle, right? It's about that they'll be trained well enough to keep the pistol in your in your holster.
It was.
Helpful, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My question is, will the range be able to generate revenue if other agencies have to come to Nucana? If they don't have a range, i- is that the kind of thing people can rent like other police departments?
This, that's the policy decision, the committee made no observation on that at all. We, what we tried to do was come up with something that could be done within the available space. And and there could be other locations down that whether to it should be used for other purposes, as you suggest, that's a something we did not consider. I would like just to add one thing to the comments that Leon and Paul made a minute ago. This is not a range where you stand behind a bar and shoot at a target. This is a range which allows downrange activity by the participant so they can learn how to deal with difficult people.
Well, to that point, is there also an opportunity to be training with other services locally? So mental health services or, you know, is there, is there an opportunity to be able to do that?
We asked, we were at a meeting in Wilton a while back. And I asked the chief of Wilton and Richfield, if we get our facility in place, would you come down? And they said, oh, no, this is too far to go. Okay, so for us to then, if there is a facility in what part of Wilton, you know, it it just, it is a long way for us to go. Plus, we like to train on duty and train right after they come up or before you go. And it would just, it just builds a sense of confidence and security for every, every shift that's going through this.
Right.
Where they can train together here and then go into the office if you're on. So I think your point, you're asking, we could, we could train EMS with fire.
Right.
And work on what we call warm zone training when the school shooter has an habit and react to it. We can bring EMS in with us, protect them, train with them. Currently, we can do that, we're out forty five minutes away from Denver. Denver is, you know, it's just far and requires too much of training on our training resources, which they have. Accommodate much more training than we currently do. We do very, very minimal training back down compared to what we should. And to add to these points, something you may be familiar with, with the ten thousand hour rule. That's the rule that if you do something for ten thousand hours, you're likely going to be an expert at it. I want my officers to be experts at using force and not using force. I hope as residents and members of these boards, you want our option to get in this training center of our officers to move towards that goal of being an expert and hopefully not using force.
Can I make a suggestion? This question of the firearms training facility is something we should take offline. It's it's a whole separate question. I think we all agree we want proper training for our officers. So there are other options, and we and we need to discuss those and present them to you. So and I would also, last week, I think you spent an hour, almost an hour presenting to the building committee on on your training requirements. So that video is also available to watch.
And the building committee did vote on the importance of of police training, of the police. We did have United's approval there.
A building plan can go forward without the training facility being resolved.
It could be on this site, on another site in town or out of town.
Well, except for Paul, except for the fact that if we try to, if we build it at South Avenue, he cannot accommodate other police forces because it's a planning zoning issue as far as what they will prove, so.
If it's designed that way, if it's designed a different way where it's attached to the building like in Bethel.
Well, it's a complex issue, which we need to spend more time on.
Separate subject.
Yeah.
Any other questions about this? Happy to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Welcome to stay for the second half of the presentation. Chuck and Eric. Stuart, do you want to join us or do you want to join the?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. Up here.
This is.
Apologies, the telephone ringing.
Chuck Booz is the name partner with Booz, Castle Booz.
Castle Booz.
Associates. And Eric is a specialist with that firm.
Eric is our senior landscape architect.
Eric Royce.
And we've been tasked with studying four different sites. And for our last visit, the administration wanted to look at four other sites other than Saks, and we've done that. And we're about to make that presentation, Eric.
Just to quickly review, we started back in February, and we said if we, we have to first of all decide the viability of the current location for renovation or building there. If we wait, if we did that and tried at the same time to look at other locations, if we, if we, we wouldn't be talking about this now. So we wanted to do it concurrently. That's why a different architect firm has been doing this. And we started with fifty two or fifty four town owned properties, whittled it down to thirteen. We visited all those sites in February, March, and then the KBA folks have analyzed several locations. The town council actually is the one that asked to have a further presentation of the alternatives. And I would emphasize to the Saks location that was presented in our prior meeting, the odd boards was presented as the optimum location among the thirteen and not the only location, so.
It's in your, it's in your share plus. Go share plus, go to today's meeting, you can pull it up. It's on your iPad, too.
Yep. Just looking at it. Three four million. Thanks, Johnny. This one, I can't tell if it's an included range or not. I think it's.
None of them have range.
Just doesn't say that, though.
Yeah, so they all say no range.
This one does not show me much, does it? Locust Ave. I think it's thirty four million.
Okay. I think we're there. So my name is Eric Royce. I'm a landscape architect with Castle Booz Associates, it's Chuck Booz. We were tasked with looking at all the various sites, as Kevin was saying. And I'm not a building architect, I'm a landscape architect. That's where my specialty fits in, is looking at all these different sites, seeing what's good about them. Got enough space, if we've got the topography, what are the factors that work into siting a building in town? So we looked at, we started out looking at, I believe, about sixteen sites.
Thirteen.
Thirteen sites. Well, there was more added, and we went back and forth. But thirteen sites, we whittled it down to a few select sites. The last meeting we were at, we presented the Saks Middle School site. And we were asked to go back and and show some of the the process that we did on some of the other sites that were more viable than the rest. So I'll I'll get into that. This shows where all the sites are and where the sites that I'm going to talk about tonight are. The sites that I'm going to talk about tonight are the Locust Avenue site, the Lumber Yard site, and the high school site, which is between the high school and South Avenue. A lot of people think that's Wavine Park, but it's actually a high school piece of property. The Saks Middle School site, we'll talk about a little bit, just as reference from the last meeting, and then the Leaf Pile site.
Did you go to the next slide where it shows the show? So that's the.
I I may add to that, that of course, each site that we studied is different.
No, I can't find.
So in order to put fit the program.
I can't find it.
For a building on different sites, we had to come up with three conceptual, four conceptual designs, each one designed to fit a particular site.
Right. And and these sites will go over, there, there's value on each, on each one of them. We compared prices for developing on each site because each site has a different different obstacles to overcome to build on them. But it's not our decision to make which site you perceive as the right site. It's your value. And that value will depend on the cost, it'll depend on what you feel like you're getting in the end run as far as the site's concerned. All these sites will have a brand new building that's purposely designed for a police facility. The circulation in the building will work as far as circulating prisoners through the building or circulating the public through the building. The the mechanical systems will be designed especially for venting the right spaces the right way. For example, evidence storage is potentially hazardous. It's a separate ventilation system from your detention block, which is a separate detention or separate ventilation system from where your staff is. So there's a lot of different purposely designed things that go into this building. But another thing to to think about with if for a new building in town, it's a new municipal building, and these are new buildings like your library, like your town hall. Signature buildings that will go somewhere in town that's purposely built as a police station. Another thing before I start getting into individual sites is for a police station, a modern police station, police are not responding typically from the station itself. They are on patrol, they're around town, they're they're driving around. They are responding from patrol, not from the building itself. The typical time for shift changes at a police department, so the most traffic that happens is in the morning, seven, eight in the morning, when the first shift shows up, and around five o'clock at night when the next shift goes through. So keep that in mind when when we're talking traffic and how police respond from a location.
Actually, Eric, just to correct you, there's more like quarter in Nucana, it's quarter seven and quarter three. Yeah, yeah.
Non heavy peak periods, right? And I I just want to add as well, the last presentation included concept designs for a facility with a firing range within it. After the last meeting, we were directed to take the firing range out of the building and structure, structure the building accordingly.
Which was important in terms of some topographies.
Yes.
Don't lend themselves.
Topography and potential water problems. And costs.
So every cost estimate, no range is included.
That's correct.
I saw that, except the high school, sorry, the Locust Avenue didn't say that. Didn't say no range, unless I missed it. So it's okay, I just, but the assumption is there's no range in any of them.
We missed it, there's no range in any.
Okay, no worries.
So you're prepared to say that to add a range to these, you could add another three million dollars?
To add a range to these, you could add another three million dollars.
But not at that location.
At least.
Not at that location.
It wouldn't be on that location.
Because of the high water.
So I'm going to get into the individual sites and talk about their pluses and minuses. The first one is the high school site. As I stated previously, this is perceived as part of Wavine Park, but it's actually part of the high school.
Eric, roll it forward.
Just taking time.
Oh, this remote. That's why.
Yeah. There we go. So the high school site is across the street from where the Saks Middle School site was. The Saks Middle School driveway is top center in this image. The new police department would go in and have surface parking. We're, the big thing we're, we're working around on this site is we've got to clear the area to do it. It's a mature forest. And we've got a couple of vernal pools there that we'll have to work around environmentally. To make things work on this site. Other things that are, that we have to think about is there's a walking path that comes through Wavine, through the woods. That would have to be relocated. And one of the thoughts with this site was to bring a driveway through from the high school to South Avenue. To alleviate some of the traffic on farmer, on the intersection of Farm Road and South Ave. It also provides the police with a secondary entrance in and out. We know there's backup of traffic heading north on South Ave at certain times a day. Having that egress at the high school allows them to bypass that and head out that way also. This would be with a slab on grade type of structure for the building. Again, we're worried about because of the rural vernal pools and the wetlands that are in this area, we're worried about high ground, groundwater. So this is a slab on grade structure, two-story, and it's got everything you need for the police department of Sallyport. The public entry, all the parking we need. Our target parking on all these is seventy-seven spaces. We're a little more on all these sketches, just so we have a little leeway as we go into next stages of design, if that ever happens. So that's the high school site. Some of the, the building floor layouts, very similar to the other ones. We're bringing people in on the main floor level, the lower level. Circulating them through a lot of the staff and the evidence and the administration is up on the second level. But that allows an efficient use of the space and efficient use of two stories as far as the site space that we have available.
Can you enlarge the, the print?
So did you want me to enlarge this?
Well, I'm just saying. Everybody has it on the screen.
Share with Rita and I'll share with Christina.
All of, all of the buildings that we conceptualized for each site meet the program. Twenty-five to twenty-six thousand square feet. At this stage, it's, that's, that's, that's the target. Yeah. And as to repeat what Eric said, we also meet the program requirement for parking.
I would note at this point also that the town's traffic consultant, Mike Galante. Has looked at these plans and indicates that adding a driveway through from the high school would improve traffic. Of high school regardless of whether we did a police station. So it has the added benefit. Having that, so the, so the buses would have way out of high school and they all have to look from road.
The problem is still the intersection. The problem still is the intersection.
I think it's a right turn.
Traffic situation.
It's a right turn.
This, this allows them to avoid the intersection.
But most of them would go left in the intersection anyway. The other way is daring.
But, but they could circle around Farm Road and come through the intersection in the other direction.
So it actually helps the situation down. That can be explained.
In this particular case.
Just a question on your auxiliary exit on that side. Do you intend for it to go through the high school parking lot where the buses are?
Yes, right. There's the, the northern entry at the high school is a restricted entry only for staff and buses, and that's a controlled exit entry. So that's where we're proposing they have their second.
So would the police cars have to proceed under slow speed until they cleared that area?
Well, most of the responders would be out on patrol. Very seldom is a car. Tasked to leave the police station at, at high speed.
What if it was?
Yeah, it happened.
If it was, they could take either, that would be a judgment call for them. As Kevin said, we've got the traffic study and they suggested that was a benefit to this.
Yeah, the point is police stations generally should have two egresses. As it, you know, so in case one was blocked, they have an alternative. That's, so they're satisfied in that requirement in all cases. It has to be two, two egresses.
A lot of time gets used properly, but at two o'clock, definitely that shift is coming in. And you may have a patrolman out, but then there's a sergeant back at the station. Sergeant's going to get in the car and he's starting to go. No lieutenant may have to go. And if it's really serious.
And the driveway.
At two o'clock, it's pretty long. It's, it's still getting out and.
Let me ask you a question. When you're guys studying these sites, you take into consideration. Social and aesthetic considerations, or is it just pure topography?
What do you mean?
Not sure I understand the question.
It's in a park.
Yeah, I mean, do you take, do you say, gee, this site has its complications because of where it is and the proximity to other. Facilities in town and we should take that into consideration or you're just looking at it? Is it nice and flat and can we build on it? What's your criteria? I mean, you, you.
Chris, I think that's where the local, that's where the local input comes in. You know, they, they don't know Nukemun other than what we tell them because they don't live here.
That, that's where, when I say it's your decision, ultimately, that's where that comes in because you know this town better than we do. We're looking at a piece of property that we were tasked with looking at. It may or may not work. We know it's perceived as part of Wavine Park and that's a big, big negative to a lot of people. So yeah, we consider a lot of those things.
I think it's the.
But we're also looking at the site itself.
I think it's the ladder. They're looking at the site. They're not evaluating whether or not there's a baseball field. Yeah, it's, it's difficult. It's, it's judgmental that.
Yeah.
Weight into deep waters there. How would you know? Right? Kind of thing. That's fine. That's fine.
As, as we did on, on the, the other presentations we did three or four weeks ago. Our budget concerns construction costs with all the contingencies, equipment costs and the owner's project. Soft costs would be also added to the, the, the total. And in this particular case, we were adding another four hundred thousand dollars. To reflect the cost of clearing and construction of the road through the high school property. And for a total cost of this project, it's twenty-one million, six thirty-five, nine hundred. And, and just per an apples to apples comparison, we've kept the construction costs, equipment costs, owner project costs on all the, the next three that you'll see. Are all very similar. The construction cost changes a little because on some of the sites, the buildings are more challenged. You're building more walls. You're building more foundation. So that, that number shifts a little bit depending on the site, but equipment and owner project cost pretty much stays the same for all the three sites that we're.
And what's the contingency built in to that number?
It's built into the construction costs.
Of what number? What's the percent or?
Yeah.
You can tell me the number? Ten percent?
It's probably somewhere between five and fifteen.
That's fine.
Ask question. The parcel site on this, and I know you're just looking at, you know, what's before you. So this one is seven acres. And I believe with the proposal, Saks, it was three point six acres. And, and none, right? I mean, I just wonder how you come, how you need that much more land.
We're telling you what the available land is and some, some of that land, half of it is not used.
It's, yeah. I was just looking at proposed developed area. It said seven acres, so.
We, we could define this site in any way you want to. We, we, we could, you know, abbreviate the acreage devoted to this facility.
They're all about two and a half acres.
Sir?
All of them are about two and a half acres as far as the minimum requirement.
Right.
Stuart, wasn't that a requirement two and a half acres?
Right, but, but the Saks one was. Right, but the Saks one, I think it was a three point six acre site. I'm just trying to understand.
Right, exactly, but Saks was already completely flat. And without need for clearing or anything like that. It was a very inexpensive site to build.
Alright, so, so it's really more than two and a half acres in these new ones.
I think it's, you, you established the twin acre minimum in the very beginning we started. Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
But if you, if you. Take the area of the playing field, it could be if that area was three, whatever, whatever you've indicated there. It may be that what they're doing is taking over the size of the area, not just the size of the building.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, for example, the Saks building was pushed back to be equal to the Y. You could have brought it up closer to the street and taken up less land, but because of the concerns about Vista, it was pushed back to where the Y was.
Okay.
So the next site we looked. Sorry, can I just ask a quick question? Assuming all variables are set aside and we started to talk about the, the rifle shooting range. This would not be included on this particular site.
Have a shooting, a firing range.
Right, and nor would it ever be able to be. Is that a viable option there? I would think not, but.
As an outbuilding, it could, it, these sites will support an, an outbuilding, yes, but it's not part of the project cost.
I understand. Yeah, I just didn't know whether there's some that just.
As you'll see as we go on.
So this is one that would. Thank you.
And where would that go on the site?
Probably be to the south end of the parking lot. To the left or to the right side of the, the image. That's the leaf pile site up there.
No, I, I, I'm trying to think south because this was all marked off the last time.
It'll be this.
Yeah.
Do you want the high school? Yeah.
No, I, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, he's saying it's to the south of that, this way.
Yeah, well, that was more, that was more of an issue the last time and the referendum going in that direction. I can't.
When the school building. School building.
Yeah.
Department of Education headquarters building there.
Yeah, that, that was an issue.
That's a different set, different subject.
I think the range near the high school.
A firing range on this site might not be advantageous or even approvable as far as.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure north, south, east or west is really our big problem here. On this one.
Keith, just to be clear though, all four of these programmatically in terms of square footage, you're comparing apples to apples on each one of these. And, you know, as we go through this, how have you guys compared the, the current situation in, in terms of square footage? Or were we comparing exactly what we would if we renovated or?
Yes, we've got very current information on newly bid projects under the budget, by the way.
No, but current, our current situation, I'm talking about the current police station. Compared.
South Avenue renovation.
Okay.
Yeah. So square footage. Usable square footage. Apples, it's apples to apples.
It's been a long time since I looked at that building. We have the architect here. He could tell us if the size of the building, right?
Thirty thousand, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's, the existing one will have a larger footprint because it's existing.
But I think what you're asking is the program inside the building would be equal. We're not talking about expanding it from.
The curb building is thirty thousand, but these are prescribed to be twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five to twenty-six, something like that.
Right.
Bringing a lot more.
We're at the, what's the next one? Leaf pile.
So the next one we looked at was the leaf pile. This is on the south end of town. Again, it's part of Wavine Park. It is what's known commonly as the leaf pile right now. So what this would do, this would be a two-story building with surface parking. A three-story building? Three-story building with surface parking. And the idea was to keep this site in the building. I will say long and narrow so that as much of the program of leaf pile can stay the way it is as it is now. So some of the challenges with this site is the topography. It slopes off from Lapham Road to the top of the sheet here. That's one thing. The other thing is that there's not any utilities in this area. So this would have to be an onsite septic system. There would have to be an evaluation on whether you do a well or you bring the water in from the north down Lapham Road. Likewise with the electricity, there's not a lot of, there's no poles in that street in that location. So it would be a, an evaluation on whether we're bringing electricity down from the north or up from the Merritt Parkway. We think it's probably coming down from the north, but that would have to be evaluated going forward. Another consideration here is what happens with the leaf pile. The leaf pile prevents the town from paying a certain amount to get rid of leaves. What happens to that? Do you start having to pay for that once you develop the site? So that's, those are some of the concerns with this site. As well as that it's a fairly remote location. This is pretty south in town. Pretty much all the calls would be responding to the, the right-hand side of the sheet here, heading up that way. It is a fairly unused road. I won't say unused, but traffic's pretty light on that road. Most times a day, so those are some of the concerns here. Another concern would be the drainage. Because it's a new site, we would have to build a pretty significant drainage structure to take up the twenty-five year storm. So. There's a number of different things going on on this site. As far as it goes forward. Building wise. Building wise, three, three floors is the first floor. The lower level would be kind of a walkout basement type of thing. Up toward the street, it would be buried out, out back. It would be exposed. So that's where your Sallyport is. That's the floor. All the detention comes in and your detention circulation, your. The processing and all that happens on that lower level as well as a patrol and a lot of your mechanical equipment. On the next floor up is your main level, so that's your, your public level where people are coming in and out to. To the police station as well as the fitness and locker rooms for the, for the patrol. And then on the, on the top floor would be your investigation, your detectives, evidence and your admin as well as a, a, a closed off lobby. So that could be used separately.
Could I ask a question? The, the lot is, is the fifty acres, is that just the part that is currently the leaf pile or is it that entire?
That whole side of the street.
Including the wooded area. Okay, thank you.
It's technically part of Wavine Park, yes.
Okay.
Yes, you would need to get approval for all the deed restrictions associated with the park and the park use.
But that's state approval.
You have to create additional parkland if you take parkland.
We're just using it.
You're, well, we're, we're using it, but I also.
Consistent with the deed.
There's, there is a legal opinion in the file on this. It's exactly what can go in that site. And can you respond to that?
Again, that's, we teed it up here as something that's eligible, we believe. So that's.
So that.
Yeah.
Fits the, okay.
But by the way, this site is remote. Goes against their principle that ought to be an important town building visible to the public. So this is, one of the sites is viable, but it's not one that I think. Any of us really recommending it's, it's.
Yeah, I know, but it's also.
One question on all the sites, you know, generator, diesel tank, all that, is that all part of the construction cost? Um, assuming you're not reusing anything, or maybe you are, I don't know.
No, we're not re- reusing anything with the, with the, with possible exception of the relatively new communications equipment. Some of that could be relocated.
Okay.
The idea, the idea is, is that whatever structure gets built on these sites, gets built. The operation of the police department stays the way it is during the construction. And there comes a time when that's ready to get turned over.
Cut over.
Um, they pull the plugs on their computers, they put them in the back of the car, they drive over to the other place, they plug them in, and they're good to go.
So this particular site varies in cost primarily because of the drainage retention pond at about four hundred thousand and onsite septic for about six hundred thousand. So we wind up with twenty-two thousand, four eighty-five, nine hundred.
And the other unknowns in there are the credit sale, whatever you get from the existing PD. Um, if that's repurposed or sold, how that works in price-wise. Um, and then the cost for the leaf removal, if that has to go somewhere else.
That would reduce the current size of the leaf pile by fifty percent.
Not so sure that parcel is actually parkland, because it is a separate parcel from on the other side, the east side of, I don't know, Lapham. It's all part.
There's an opinion on it. It's a.
Yeah. Another thing that ought to be said about this.
I'm not trying to get bogged down on it, but I just think those are actually interesting things, and utilities actually come right up to Lapham Road.
Right, right. Any questions?
I would point out one other thing about this site. To the south of this site, there's room for a five-hours practice facility with parking, regardless of whether we, wherever else we put the park, uh, the.
Exactly.
Including South Avenue.
Exactly.
That would be a good location for it.
Would that be less expensive, Kevin, or you haven't really looked at that?
The locating it on this site would not be less expensive, because you'd have parking that you'd have to develop. Uh, a road in, especially if you're gonna have out-of-town, uh, people using the building.
A retention pond.
Septic system, well, if you need domestic water.
So it.
I'm saying regardless of whether you put the police building there, you're, I'm talking about a separate, we're all saying the same thing, okay. All right, well, that's not necessarily.
Uh, the next site is the lumberyards, what we call the lumberyard site. Um, this is a site off of, um, Elm Street. Currently, it's municipal parking for about three hundred, three hundred and fifty cars. There, to the upper right on this diagram, is a building which was recently acquired for the Board of Ed, I believe.
Will be, will be.
Will be. Um, for the Board of Ed. Um, but this is a municipal parking lot right now. What we're proposing in this drawing is a new police department, three levels, um, a basement level, and then two above-grade levels. And a three hundred-plus-car, two-deck parking garage. Um, so the upper level of this parking garage would be to the public, for remain to the public, for commuters. And the lower level would presumably go to the police department and their equipment. They don't need all that space, so there's, there's, we'd have to figure out how we're gonna divide that lower level into police and municipal parking. When you're looking at this, to the left of the proposed building is a ramp that goes down to the lower level of the parking deck. Uh, to the right is on-grade parking, that would be your public parking to get in and out of the police department. And then all the way over to the right is the existing, um, entrance in and out. Uh, and that would give you access to both the lower level of the parking and the upper level of the parking deck. Why that's important is with any police department, you have to have multiple in, egresses in and out of the site. So it's two egresses from the top deck, two egresses from the lower deck, and that's the big thing. Um, there are a lot of challenges with this site as far as it's an existing site. Uh, we suspect there's some unsuitable materials under the site, being a former lumberyard. Uh, there's the Metro North right away that we're working right up against. That would require additional permitting there. Um, there's also developed area restrictions. Um, but this does give you a municipal building that's right on a main street in town. Um, it does have you responding on Elm Street, um, both to the east and to the west. Property acquisition costs, um, and lost, loss of tax revenue and loss of the revenue from the municipal parking, uh, need to be considered for this one.
Don't we own land? Tax, but tax revenue, don't we own that property?
I think that's a run issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Parking is true.
Parking. The, the big cost here is the parking deck.
Parking. Parking. Yeah. Uh, so this is the, the floor layouts for that building. Uh, again, it's a lower level at the lower garage level. It would have your fitness, it would have the men's locker, women's locker, the mechanical spaces. Your main level would be your public level with the lobby, um, and your processing and your Sally Port, and your detention spaces, some of your patrol spaces and IT. And then on the upper level, you'd have your admin and your evidence and your detectives up there with a controlled lobby to get in and out of that space.
Very similar to the, uh, building proposed for the leaf pile, but the floors have been switched to take advantage of the upper deck. Okay.
My screen's like one slide behind, that's why. So cost-wise, cost comparative-wise, um, this one is about the same as far as the construction cost, the equipment cost, the owner project cost. The big cost here is that parking garage, which is eight to ten million dollars. Um, and the shoring and the walls, because you're doing all the grading and you're working right up against other buildings, so you have to temporarily put shoring and walls in to support that structure. So those are some of the costs there. Uh, we, we're working on a garage up in Massachusetts right now. That cost, we're, we're kind of in the middle of design, so it keeps going back and forth. The owner keeps changing their minds about solar on top. That's been going between eight million and twelve million dollars. So it's about the same cost range for this one. Any questions on the lumberyard site? For parking deck?
Yeah. That, that will vary. The, the smaller the deck, the more expensive the space is going to cost.
Sure, was this twenty-three thousand?
These are not, these decks are designed to meet the levels of that you require to meet. For instance, you're gonna have probably twelve feet difference in elevation, where a normal parking garage might have eight. So there's, uh, all of that factors into the cost. And we have a parking garage consultant, Benjamin, that are part of most of these parking garages. And they're the ones that are pricing it along with, uh, construction, construction manager, Quincy is.
Yeah, and it'll range between twenty-five and fifty. Uh, fifty would be real inefficient parking. We had a lot of access drives and ramps. Um, when you get real efficient, you get back those. Um, next site is a, the Locust Ave site. This is, again, this is municipal parking. This plan that I've got up right now also assumes that we're acquiring a number of properties to make this work. Um, so we're acquiring two properties on the corner of Heritage Hill Road and Locust Ave. Those are business properties. Uh, and we're also acquiring two properties that are residential, I think multifamily, on Forest Ave. Our Forest, Forest Road, Forest Ave, um, to the, to the right on this sheet. Uh, so this building solution and this garage solution is a real urban solution. We're good, we're, we're working with grades and we're working right up to the edge of things when we can. So there's a lot of shoring, there's a lot of walls, uh, a lot of temporary shoring, and a lot of inefficiency in the garage layout because of the way it's shaped and how we're taking advantage of things. So those are some of the things we think about on, on this one. The net as far as municipal parking, you've got a hundred and fifty-three municipal parking spots there now. You're really losing probably three-quarters of those, uh, to get this, this new garage and building in. So again, with the floor layout, the idea is the, this is, would be a three-story building. The lower story would be at the lower garage level, would be pretty much buried. Uh, women's lockers, your break rooms, uh, some unexcavated space, and this was mostly down at that level, so we have an opportunity to circulate from that lower garage level where a lot of the, the patrol parking will be up to the upper levels to make that work. Uh, on the main level, you'd have your Sally Port, your patrol, um, your detention block, um, your break room, and a lot of your public spaces right on the, the corner of, uh, Locust.
It's actually a split-level design, because we're going from the entrance to the upper parking deck up high uh, and coming down to the corner, which is about midway between the end, the lower entrance to the parking lot. Uh, and so that has to be a, a split level to, to, to really make it work for accessibility, et cetera.
And, and this is where, when I talked about public buildings and the real making a presence as far as a public building is concerned, that's where this really comes in, is that this plan scheme shines, is that you'd be taking over that corner of the street, and it would really present itself as a public building in that location. And it relates to the town hall and all the other public services you've got in this area. So comparative costs, um, this is one's a lot more. Starting out with the construction cost, because of the urban solution, the, the walls and the, the drainage and the shoring.
Traffic control.
Traffic control. Um, that's where those construction costs come in. But we've also got costs in here for acquiring those additional properties. We have a range for those, the shoring and the walls that would be associated with building on the site. The parking deck and ramps, again, uh, that's a pretty big number, uh, and we've got a range depending on how that ends up getting built. Um, and then the unknown, so the credit sale, the, the existing PD, loss of the parking revenue from this lot. Um, the loss of tax revenue, and then just the loss of parking for downtown, which you can't even put a price on. So that would bring the total amount on this one to thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four million.
Thirty-four million.
That's right.
He suggested it.
That's the last slide. That's it. If you have any questions. Um, we've got some slides from the Saks Middle School from last time, but we talked about those last time.
Well, look, thanks for doing all that work. I know.
Yeah, thank you.
I think this team pointed you towards some of those spots, so. Easy for us to be critics, right? Point, point you over to Locust, and then it's thirty-four million dollars, and we're used to it. I bet you are. I bet you are. Well, thanks for, thanks for doing that work. Questions?
That's a school reimburse.
Oh, for the Saks, okay. So, so do we have any idea on state reimbursement for police stations anyway? Zero?
We asked that last time.
Somewhere right around zero. For the sake of tonight, zero. Plan on zero. That you got, you gotta do that. You gotta find us some money.
So the unknown number here is what the property at South Avenue is worth, uh, to a developer, because, uh, it's clearly downtown, you can't any real estate, and as residential property, it's, um, it's valuable. The question is, how many millions? So that's the offset to any of these alternative locations.
I think it's more valuable to the town to keep it where it is, and less expensive.
Well, it would have to be at the least, the numbers, the seven million or seven and a half million dollar difference to break even on any of the, the least expensive ones. The other ones are all eight, nineteen, sixteen million dollar spread, so those just from our swim lane, which is the math of the whole question. There are only two that would probably be close at eight million to, to break even, never mind all the other related social issues and other stuff, right?
Which, which can have economic costs too, right? I mean, litigation with respect to wetlands for the, uh, wave, you know, the site and Wavine, not Wavine Park, but, um, but my bigger concern is, you know, I'm being told eight months we can start digging, um, with rehab plan in, in place. Um, and my biggest concern, Kevin, is, you know, I said this before, we want to get these men and gentlemen, gentlemen and women, um, a new police station, and I just see.
Well, keep in mind, we, we went down this road because we didn't know whether the answer for South Avenue was gonna be, could it be renovated?
Right.
Right?
Right.
We didn't know that answer when we started.
Of the five sites that you have here, the least disruptive to the normal activity of the town would probably be the leaf pile. Is that a fair comment?
It, it would be least, the least disruptive, yeah.
Most expensive.
Yeah, no, I'm not looking at it from a night. I saw the numbers. I'm just thinking, just, you know. Everything else is right in the heart of town.
Right.
So to, to build something is gonna be very disruptive.
Disruptive in the sense of.
Construction. Disrupted. Traffic, you name it.
Or operational.
Uh, more operation.
That wasn't part of mine, but yes, certainly. Yeah, I mean, building it at the leaf pile, you're gonna be in a remote place building. It's gonna be easy to, much easier to build it. However, when you're finished, you're still gonna be in a remote.
Yeah, no, no, I, I was. You're gonna be in the leaf pile.
Much further from the northern end of town.
Yeah.
I mean, legitimately further, especially in traffic, not, not square miles.
But just from a disruptive standpoint, over the, over the timeline of building.
Right.
That is the least disruptive. That's my only point.
I think tonight has been very helpful to all of us, because we are looking at the full range of options, which we didn't have the last time. You know, it was, uh, you were presenting, and I think that made a number of us a little uncomfortable as to just what are the possibilities, uh, in town, and have we really truly looked at, you know, everything and can look at it as um, all of, everything before us at the same time. So I think we've got some decisions to make, but now we know what we're dealing with.
It's a really a process question. What, what is the next, which really the next step? Do you need a?
I'm not sure, what is selectmen decision? But I've been saying, we, we need to make a decision by January.
So it's, the board of selectmen have no say in this.
The board of selectmen are not gonna decide this question. It's, it's really gotta be all the, all the funding bodies.
I agree, but to Paul's point, I think it's just, what's the starting point? Two, two choices. You could, you guys could recommend something for us to evaluate, Chris, right?
And if it's all, if it's all of us, we can have a vote right now.
We could at least have a, yeah, non-binding, because I have to send to the joint committees.
All the boards are here, and you said it's not selectmen's decision, so it's everybody, so we're all here.
Let's call it that, it's document's decision, so.
A suggestion, I mean, that's a suggestion. Another one could just be if there's a proposed, a preferred option you, that the selectman would like us to look at, we could take it. I think you gotta get an estimate for the, what you could sell that for. I get that it's gonna be a range. But I know that if we just voted on option A, someone's gonna be upset because we didn't evaluate the sale or whatever, and we spent too much money for down the town. Who knows, right? There's always gonna be input, but, um, it wouldn't be the worst thing if you wanted. We could at least run the math on this thing and just say, hey, okay, well, look economically, if that's the only fil- filter. I mean, if that's economics only filter, we know the answer. It's, it's renovating place, right?
You know what?
Sign a petition because we were against the Saks move the police department to Saks. We put close to a thousand petitions. And, and same thing is going to happen where we're going to help builders. We're probably going to have tripled them out on that petition as well. So we are against the moving of the police station.
The neighbors want to keep the words. They don't want to develop a committee to develop.
The rest of New Canaan wants to keep it where it is.
Yeah, I, I think that's generally the, yeah, I think that's the general consensus.
Have a non-binding.
Why can't the town council just take a poll at our next meeting?
We can, yeah.
Because ultimately it's going to, it's, we're the last line. So we can already tell you where our heads are. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud.
But there's no.
But is it ripe? Is it, is it, I'm just thinking legally, is it, is it ripe?
I mean, we, it's the way, the way I would answer that is, and Nick and Kevin have brought it up, we have a process in place, right? It starts at the board of selectmen and it moves through.
Traditionally.
Traditionally. And I, and I'd like to respect that. I'd like to see us do that again. And I, I like the idea of having that choice. You know, maybe it's ABC, whether it's, you know, renovating place, new construction in place, and then the best of the other five locations that we discussed and, and just take it from there.
But Steve, I, I support what you're saying, but one of our problems has been that we're not part of the decision-making process. And right now we have the opportunity to take at least a straw poll to see how everybody feels rather than complaining at the tail end when we are just giving a project to approve.
Well, you have a meeting Wednesday.
Yeah.
Take your straw poll. You go first. Seriously, just go for it. Yeah, take your vote, take your vote Wednesday and then, and it would come to us for our meeting in December and we can kind of get our thoughts to it. And then together make a recommendation to the selectmen at the end of the day. What's wrong with that process? Steve? Steve?
Heard some comments from here and there. And I, I guess in deciding this, I know that there's criteria, but is every criteria equal? Like, is there a way that we can say, okay, this is the criteria, but this is maybe most important. So here we have to take into account. Like, is there something that we can kind of consolidate those considerations in the criteria and how we should weight each of those projects?
That's what you do.
Rita, at the last meeting, the last presentation, the chief of police said that it was 90 something percent acceptable if they stayed where they are and it was renewed.
Let me, let me qualify that. It is accurate that I said it met 98% of our needs.
Right.
Based on the needs analysis. However, my preference on behalf of the New Canaan Police Department is to build a new purpose-built building in place along with a training center. That would meet all of our needs, 100% of our needs. My opinion is cost benefit analysis of a new building, it'll be more efficient. It'll be built as a police department and it would be the absolute best option for us.
Are you talking about preserving the facade and building behind it or taking everything down and building a new building?
Well, I think a new building would be ideal. I think we could recreate the facade so it looks identical. I have some experience and I'm sure all of you do with renovating houses. It never goes well. It never goes according to the timeline or the cost. I'm very concerned about us continuing to operate in a building that's going to have all the wiring, all the plumbing, all the electrical, all the sewer lines ripped out. I don't, I, I believe the experts, but it's hard for me to believe personally that that's going to work for us, given the work that our officers do each day. So my personal preference is build a new building in place with a training center. We have an exceptional police department. The investment you're making in this, in this department is just incredible. Our officers go out there, they run towards danger, they do great things, they put their lives at risk. We owe them the greatest level of training we can give them and the best facility. And I appreciate this really thoughtful discussion. And, and it's a great thing that we're, we're evaluating all these options. But we really need to do what's best for our officers and our residents. And frankly, that is build a new building in place with a training facility that is state of the art so that we can say to everyone in New Canaan, everyone in the state, our officers are the best trained officers in Connecticut, if not the nation. I don't ever want to wake up to see a headline in any newspaper saying that our officers use force in a way they shouldn't have. And I can guarantee that they won't if we train them to the level that we should and we're not there yet. Like I said, policy, training and oversight, we need to fill that training aspect. It's so critical. So that's my personal preference.
Holding the training center aside, under any scenario that, I, I think I won't speak for anybody else. I support that 100%. I think you have a training center. I do too. But the difference between your 98% and 100 is 14 and a half million dollars.
Yes.
That's the hiccup.
I think everyone needs to make.
Yeah.
If, if it's truly going to be a 50-year building, renovate as new.
Yeah.
Great. In, in my mind, I have a question about that. If that's accurate.
What if it's 10? I mean, you get the point. I mean.
Sure.
Yeah. It's a lot to have a little.
Right. Cost benefit. So, so going to that, that would be option A for me. Option B would be renovate as new, move us out.
Yeah.
Do it properly and completely along with a training center at the back of our.
Yeah. And I use the vacate option there when I did, gave you that number because I think, I think that also, speaking for myself.
Any option where we're going to operate in, in the facility.
Yeah.
With a renovator.
That's important. That's important.
It won't work right. It's not safe for everyone and it's just not the right.
So that weights your criteria right there.
You know, we invest in public safety in a lot of ways and we hope we never have to use it. We buy a million dollar ladder truck fire engine periodically, every 10 years or so. I hope we never have to use it, but it's there for an emergency. We have, we have to kind of invest in the things that we think the town needs public safety wise. And I think you folks are, are smart. You're, you're going to figure this out. So I'm hoping we move towards this, this goal quickly. It's been 20 years of talk and I, I got to thank Kevin for moving this along. And I thank all of you for your, your good work and your volunteerism for, for making sure that the town and our officers get, get the best product absolutely possible.
I'd like to say, you know, having toured other new buildings, my preference is a new building. We've gone through this exercise to see if it's possible to do a new building. I don't like the new building cost at, at the current location. And I, but I do, and Stuart also, you know, having been our former police commissioner for 10 years, believes a new building is the answer. It probably lasts 70 to 100 years rather than 50 years. And I just think, you know, that's why among the choices, I would build a new building somewhere and the delta is the Chicago, having luxury housing built next to you, which would bring a big number to the table in terms of the delta. So.
If I could, could just mention along this analysis, there's a major intangible, but it's tangible and it's, and we saw it recently with the whole process of trying to move forward with the new library and a great sentiment for people and how the town looks in some of the buildings. My great fear is that, well, A, I think if being on the building committee, I think they can deliver you a fabulous building. It'll be maybe a little bigger because we have the footprint, but I'm, I am sure you'll have what you need, completely understand your need for a training facility. But I would like to see you guys get a building, not in a decade. And I can, I can only imagine barriers that will be put in place if people say, we're going to tear it down, even if we're saying going to replicate it. I just, I think that's an enormous, enormous challenge.
Well, maybe.
Be on the money. Be on the money. I'm just.
Maybe one thing to get, one thing to get a poll on might be keep the existing building, either renovate as new or tear down and rebuild the same site versus a new site. And if there's no one supporting the new site, there was all of our conversations to the existing site, do we do, as we just discussed? I mean, that, that might be an interesting straw poll to take. Do you think?
We can do that. We can definitely.
One quick thing from the chief that I think is implicit in what you were saying about the current location, but I only spilled it out. In terms of access for vehicles to go to places in town and return, one of the advantages of where you are now is that if you can't get there on a main street, you can hit a side street. And you can reach anywhere in town like five different ways.
Yeah.
But a lot of these, especially the high school thing, that, that doesn't get you there. Is that one of the reasons that you were thinking in, in the current site?
Well, we know it works well, right? I mean, we, we know that it works well for
Yeah.
all kinds of emergencies over the course of 50 years, close to 50 years, right? So the location I think is ideal in that respect. Sure. And everybody knows it. We're familiar with it. A lot of us love the location for a lot of different reasons. But you know, I'm, I appreciate the thoughtful discussion tonight. And I like to vote.
You may get one tomorrow morning.
Tyler, you're suggesting straw poll tonight or still calling the meeting?
I, I think you have a board, no town council meeting. Take your vote. We'll do it. And our board of finance, we'll try to get some numbers around it. And then, I mean, I think we have an answer and a recommendation to the selectmen in the second week of December. And we'll all be aligned on it. Does that make sense? And then we, we all want to be done by January. That was your goal. Would that make, that gets you to January? We could talk about the school budget, which would be a lot of fun. Is that okay with everyone? I mean, that's just a suggestion. You're up. Game on. Christina, you're up first.
Oh, yes.
That work for you?
It's a big decision.
That work for you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I think we have a plan.
Okay.
Paul, that's the plan. Town Council Wednesday, Board of Finance.
There's no $10 million angels out there, is there?
So the two was to move it, not, okay, I was confused earlier. I thought the two was to, for new versus.
No.
No, okay. Committee, correct. It's a big bill.
Stuart, do you want to say anything? You want to say anything?
No. Obviously I would prefer new construction if at all possible. Obviously there, I have personal fondness for the Saks site, but I know it is not a popular site. And my second choice would be renovate as new. I should say, no, rent, uh, uh, use the existing location as, as a backup, uh, because clearly I'm not getting my first choice. And then as, as the existing location would be a police station. Then there are two other major hurdles. One is do we renovate while we attempt to keep officers in?
No, 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 no.
No, I don't think there's any support for that. That's offices for, yeah, you.
It would be more expensive and extend the life of the project. So it wouldn't be to our advantage.
And then the second hurdle is where we put the training facility. I, I would personally believe the benefits of a robust training facility outweigh any cost. So, yeah, that would be mine.
I think that's critical. I mean, chief, you made an impassioned and well-thought-out argument.
Thank you.
As to the need for training and, and you know, I'm, I'm in pole on that. And I think we, and we need to communicate. We need to communicate that to the public at large, just in the way that it was used.
No town's ever been sued because they trained too much.
No, I, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying you wake up every day and you're happy you're here because you know it's safe every time you turn on the news. And I, I think if ever there was a time, people get that. I don't think that's a.
Well, we've got a trial going on right now. The nation's been transfixed with.
Several of them. I mean, we've had a number.
Question aware.
Can the dispatch center as is be relocated to Irwin or would it have to be? It could. I mean, literally, because we put so much money and time and effort into that. So we could literally pick it up and move it. So then how many other, how many other places are per square foot do we need besides the Irwin house?
My opinion is Irwin House would meet the bulk of our needs. We could potentially bring some trailers into brother related needs. But I think the bulk could be accommodated in.
It's not bad. It's not a bad option, you guys. That works.
I'm sorry?
None of your staff would have to be located outside.
No, no. We'd have to make accommodations for jail. Right, right.
Well, the, the delta was a million and a half dollars. Then what, what, what was the driver for a million and a half dollars of cost since we're using our own space? What would have not if we were using Irwin? Get a little creative. We have space, right?
And fitting, and fitting out that rental for, in a temporary basis.
Okay. That's a good science project to figure out how to spend that zero, to get that down to zero. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. And thank you guys very much. Thank you very much for that analysis.
Thanks, everybody.